Okay, I'd like to call to order this committee the whole meeting of May 8th, 2025. And at this point in time, I'll ask if there are any declarations of interest. Seeing none on the screen or none in the chamber. We'll go to business arising from the minutes. And do not see any, so we'll move on to our delegations. We do have one delegation. We have an update from the Nuclear Innovation Institute. And with us here in person, we have Jessica Lindthorne, welcome.
Great, thank you. Thank you so much. Good morning, thanks for having me. Nice to see you, Madam Warden. It sounds like there's a couple of celebrations today, so I do want to just acknowledge a welcome and congrats to Mr. CIO. Very exciting and very well deserved. Happy birthday, Madam Warden. And the Leafs, thank you for, let's acknowledge the Leafs, all right? My colleague Chad Richards is watching online and I'm sure he's shaking his head at that comment. So let's, uh, let's get on with the business. Thank you very much for having me today. I'm really proud to talk about the Nuclear Innovation Institute, the work we do. I think I know many members of council and I see many members of council at different industry events, but then I also have the privilege of joining you at Roma. And this year I'll be joining at AMO as well. It's a great opportunity for us to engage. So today I want to talk to you about our 2024 annual report. Really celebrate the work that we've done. I do want to thank you for your ongoing support. As I mentioned, and we really look forward to our continued engagement and our partnership through a number of avenues. It is a rather big deck, but I'm going to move through it pretty quickly just to give you the updates that I, I leave with you verbally, but I certainly ask that you reach out with any questions and dig into our annual report as you're able. The Nuclear Innovation Institute, we really do celebrate innovation. Rather than invention, we believe innovation is, is change. It's making things better. It's improvement, it's finding efficiency. We work together as a team through our founding members and that are very talented workforce at the Nuclear Innovation Institute. To inspire whether that's public policy support, economic development, skill development, workforce. But then certainly our nuclear sector research and innovation projects. It's a very exciting time at our organization. All of this is possible because we are a member not-for-profit organization. Our founding members, as you'll see, so Bruce Power, Atkins Realist, BWXT, Cameco, ES Box and Canetrix. We have agreements with the Power Workers Union and the Town of Soggin Shores as they've worked with us to provide some space in their community. We are a very strong team and we believe that this approach and working collaboratively is what brings us our success. At the Nuclear Innovation Institute, we have core values. And I often talk to the team and we celebrate our core values of how we work. And we work through collaboration with respect, creativity and trust. In our organization, you will find some of the most creative minds I've had the privilege of working with. And this is how we are able to be innovative. So we bring this work together every day with our founding members at our organization. And I do want to acknowledge that we are located on the territory of the Anishabi Nation, the people of the three fires known as Ajibwa, Chippewa, Ottawa and the Potawatomi nations. Now homeland of the Chippewas of Soggin and the Chippewas of Nawash, the keepers of the land. And we recognize the traditional homeland of the Maiti nation. I'll also acknowledge that when we discuss medical isotopes, the production of isotopes is on the territory of the Soggin Ajibway Nation, as is the Bruce Power site. So our vision at the Nuclear Innovation Institute, we are, we truly believe that we can work towards a Canadian landscape that celebrates innovative nuclear industry, recognizing that it is an integral part of our clean energy future. We also recognize and celebrate other clean energy technologies that are out there, but we do know that nuclear needs to be an integral part of our future. Our mission at the Nuclear Innovation Institute, our very talented team of 21 people, we're moving a tremendous amount of work in these three areas. Industry voice, and I'll bring, I'll speak to each of them further throughout the deck. But this is where we have a great opportunity to engage with our members of council here today, with the communities across the Clean Energy Frontier region through a series of programming. Workforce development, skill development, really bringing some awareness to skilled trades, really exciting programs I'll speak to as well. And then lastly, this, this third pillar around industry advancement. Looking at efficiencies, looking at environmental research. How do we adopt technology that may already exist in other sectors? And how do we bring that into nuclear for our, our opportunity? So I'll start with this industry voice as a pillar. This is a photo from our Clean Energy Frontier Conference that happened last year. And we did just release a save the date. We're looking forward to the conference, October 21st and 22nd. This is a photo of the conference in our facility that's at the Bruce Energy Center, so near the Bruce Power Visitor Center. Looking forward to bringing this programming back and really celebrating what we, what we have done together, quite frankly, around our Isotope Coalition. Bruce Power will provide a good update. And we have a real robust program that we're bringing together and excited to bring forward. So the Bruce Power Nexus Research Center is a center within the Nuclear Innovation Institute. And it is, it's a platform for exploring these critical energy topics. We work together through the Bruce Power Nexus Research Center. Again, driving policy, looking at these recommendations where we can move meaningful change together. We do know that this is an innovative approach. And my colleague Chad Richards, leading this portfolio, is doing a tremendous job. Leading the Isotope Coalition, the Clean Energy Frontier Program, our Environment Portfolio, the Green Ribbon Panel, and the programs continue that are coming out of this Bruce Power funded Nexus Research Center. Again, really grateful for the engagement of Gray County Council and, and all of our colleagues across the Clean Energy Frontier in moving this work forward. My colleague Stephanie was here not too long ago talking about the climate project. This is an exciting piece as well, coming out of the Nexus Research Center. As we look forward with the industry voice pillar, I will comment that we are working right now on a community readiness study. This is a program and a study that will come out later this year, but the opportunity to, to do some research in large infrastructure projects and how we can work together with our communities to get ready for large infrastructure, potential Bruce C. project. So that's something to be aware of is coming up. We're also doing a community resiliency strategy. This is a program coming out of the Nexus Research Center where we recognize that there's opportunity to work together on the community development and social connections and service as we're able. So bringing that community resiliency study together in partnership is another successful piece that we can bring forward to you and to work together on. Okay, so that was industry voice and I'm cognizant of time, so I'll fly through some of these. Skill development, so this is the second pillar that we have. And it's really a portfolio and a mandate of NII where we're engaging and informing youth and others on the career opportunities in nuclear. The breadth and depth of career opportunities is, is remarkable. And it's important to us that the community, the Clean Energy Frontier Region, our youth, understand that if they choose to come back, if they leave and are educated and want to come back to this area, this welcome home campaign, this conversation that we have jobs, we have lots of good jobs. We have jobs if you'd like to stay here and attend Georgian College locally as an example and get, and join our workforce. And so making this, this known and this aware is an important piece of what we're able to do at the NII. When we look at our industry workforce needs, we do our, our skill development through three pillars. We're continuing really strong STEM education in partnership with the school board, skilled trades programming, and then also our advanced education and learning where we have offered some programming in partnership with post-secondary institutes at our facility. So an exciting time to bring some of that programming and training into the region. Again, we've had such success with programs. This is just a wonderful quote from a student that participated in the project management program we offer through Shulich. That program continues to be quite successful in that partnership. And that is something we're really proud of, to be able to continue to offer post-secondary opportunities in the region. Couple photos here, STEM education related on the right. It's a day camp that we've done in partnership with Soggin Ajibway Nation. And then on the left is a photo from our Science Olympics, which this event is actually happening tomorrow. This morning I texted my colleague and I said, hey, what schools do we have from, from Gray County coming to this? And I was shocked, we have four Owen Sound teams, two Fleischerton teams and two Hanover teams. There's a number of other teams from Bruce and from Huron. Last year Godrich won, this year it feels like a Gray County team might win. But that, that event is happening tomorrow. So looking forward to providing that opportunity for our students. So that covers our second pillar of skill development. And then we step into this third pillar around industry advancement. This is a really exciting portfolio for our founding members. And I quite frankly, understand and see a tremendous opportunity for our municipal partners as we continue to learn about efficiencies and enhancements for the nuclear sector. In lots of cases, our sectors are similar with infrastructure, with concrete, with inspections. And so there's different areas that we move forward. And I often think, how does this, how does this create an opportunity for our municipal colleagues and friends? Fortunately, I do have Mayor Luke Charbonneau on the Board of Directors. And so he and I often bring a municipal lens and think about what else we can offer. In addition to the industry voice and skill development, there is a space for all of us with industry advancement. Right now, we do have a focus on efficiencies through our Kaizen for Nuclear program. This is a program about finding, finding time, finding money without compromising safety. So we all can think of processes that exist that we don't know why they're like that, but they've been like that for a long time. So let's unpack that and, and repackage it in a way that makes more sense. So this program has started this year, it's been tremendously successful. Founding members are finding an incredible amount of value. So good continued learning through this program. At the NII, we recognize that small incremental change is innovation. As we innovate, we compile, we find process improvement. This is going to boost efficiency, quality, and quite frankly, that overall effectiveness of our, our time. So when we look forward with our founding members and as I mentioned, I do believe there are, there are areas and barriers that we can unlock together. I'll just share with you that a project we are looking at is a concrete inspection demonstration project. This is partnership with Strathclyde University based out of Scotland. And although the project came to us as a potential technology for concrete inspection in nuclear, we also had the conversation of, well, I know friends that also do concrete inspections of local bridges or other municipal assets. So this is an upcoming project and study that we are launching now. We will be bringing forward as an event and a bit of a demonstration opportunity later in the year. So stay tuned on that. But all that to say, I want you to understand that at the Nuclear Innovation Institute, we see this partnership as a tremendous innovation partnership for our local, our local elected officials and our local municipalities as well. So we'll continue to move forward on our projects and I will continue to keep a municipal lens. We have tremendous relationships with staff at all three counties, Bruce Gray, Huron. And we'll continue to share and have that open dialogue. And we thank you very much for your continued support. And really again, just locking in with us that, that in our area of the province, we can be quite innovative. We can work together, continue to leverage our relationships and our connections and, and bringing STEM programming forward, aligning on advocacy efforts or, you know, looking at concrete together. There's lots of opportunity and we are just tremendously grateful that we're able to be here today and for the relationships that we have. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lindthorne. That is, uh, that's a great update to share and we'll put it out for questions from council members. It certainly is, it does shine light too on the, the sisterhood that we have with Bruce County as well. So, so the fact that we're able to, to see this mutual exchange and, and like you said, the overlap in municipal is incredible when you start drilling down into it, such as your concrete example in terms of our responsibility for our bridges and yours for what, what your industry does. So excellent example. With that, I'll put it out there. If there are questions from members of council, I'm just going to need my screen back up here if you wouldn't mind, just so we can see about, uh, any hands that go up online. But in the meantime, I'm just looking around the chamber, not seeing any. Oh, there's Councilwoman Queen, we'll start with him.
Thank you, Madam Warden, and thank you, uh, Ms. Lindthorne for doing your presentation. I heard this morning on the way up on the news that the province of Ontario, or in the province cemetery, they're looking at creating four small nuclear generation systems. I don't know if you can shed any light on that. But I think from electrification and probably from the northern part of Canada, those are probably something that I know they're maybe looking, working toward. I don't know if you can shed any light on that.
Thank you through you, Madam Warden. So yeah, the small modular reactor opportunity that we're seeing coming out of OPG is really interesting. OPG site, they are moving forward with that construction of a small modular reactor. At Bruce Power, we have large scale reactors, we have can do reactors. And so it is a really interesting opportunity to follow that and to understand the difference and the generation and what that could look like and where it's best utilized. So we're, we're keenly watching that development through OPG down, down in that direction. But what I will say again, you know, our area and what we've done through the Clean Energy Frontier Program and building this ecosystem around nuclear, it's being recognized. And I'll, just in the context that my colleague Chad and I, we were asked to speak in Alberta about the nuclear opportunity and the economic development behind nuclear. And it was a small modular reactor conference. Because everybody needs to learn to electrify and find power and how do we, how do we be clean about that? And so, you know, as Chad and I went out to, to Alberta and, you know, oil and gas and country and we're talking nuclear, we were in a community that looked a lot like our communities. It was east side of Edmonton, Strathcona County and Parkland Counties on the left, the west of Edmonton. And those two mayors invited us to come and speak. So we got to go and brag about Bruce Gray and Huron. We got to brag about all of the work that I've just talked about and, and people are watching our region and other parts of Canada because they're considering SMRs or they're considering nuclear. So it's quite an exciting time and we are certainly recognized as the champions on economic development and this ecosystem growth.
Okay, thank you. I don't see any hands online, look around the room again. Not seeing any further hands. So thank you, we appreciate always the updates that you're able to bring to us. And, and those are impressive statistics that you shared with us today as well. Thank you very much. Okay. So next we'll go on to item number five, which is determination of items requiring separate discussion from the consent agenda. There are two items, six A and six B listed on the consent agenda. Is there a desire to pull either one of those? Not seeing any hands online, looking around the room, not seeing any hands there. So it looks like, Madam Clerk, we can proceed to the recommendation for the consent agenda, that the following consent agenda items be received and that staff be authorized to take actions necessary to give effect to the recommendations in the staff reports and that the correspondence be supported and received for information as recommended in the consent agenda. May ask for mover and a seconder. Move by Deputy Warden Milne, seconded by Counselor Dobree. Any discussion? All those in favor? And that motion is carried, thank you very much. We do have a few items. Not many, but a few in section seven, which is the items for direction and discussion. The first one is item seven A. So it's recommended that the Planning and Development and Economic Development Advisory Committee Meeting Minutes dated May 1st, 2025 be adopted as presented and the following resolution contained therein be endorsed. Number one, that the report, EDTC PDUAC 0325, regarding the Economic Development and Tourism and Culture Strategic Progress Report, April 2025 be received for information. And that the report, EDTC PDUAC 0425, regarding the key sector scan and tariffs be received for information. And that the County of Gray send correspondence to the Ministry of Tourism, Culture and Gaming and Ministry of Sport to respectfully request the reinstatement of the Ontario Staycation Tax Credit that, and that correspondence be sent to, sent to our MPPs for Gray, Bruce, Owen, Sound and for Simcoe Gray. So if I could ask for a mover and a seconder to get it on the floor before we look to staff. I'll move by Counselor Kentner and seconded by Counselor Keveney. So it's now on the floor for discussion. So I'd like to invite Director Myers to come on up and, and feel free to hand it over to Director Taylor when it's appropriate.
Thank you very much, Warden. Good morning, County Council. Sorry for the scratchy voice, allergy season is for real this year. So, uh, don't mind me. We had a really good planning and economic development advisory committee meeting last week. It was full of discussion and engagement, which I think is why we love these meetings so much. What we learn from our public members and from all of our municipalities is really impactful and helps identify where we're going to go forward. So we did have two reports that came forward from our department for that. And the first was our very first strategic progress update based on the master plan of where we're headed so far in 2025. So one of the most significant things to note, last year, we talked about year one of our master plan delivery being about foundational work. This year, as we're moving into year two, we carry on that foundational work because we're in a point where we can maintain that and we're moving into a year of study. So I know we talked about that during our budget discussions, but that's very much where we are in terms of our strategic work now in 2025. And that's everything from understanding where the best marketing channels are. What is the best time of day to reach out to people? Doing all of our due diligence work on our investment-ready potential lands so that we can move from having seven investment-ready lands to hopefully 17 or more by the end of 2025. So those are the types of things that we're doing for studying. And then also evaluating, and this year as we head into our season at Gray Roots for the Village, we went through a lean project last year. And we have identified a brand new operating procedure to go into 2025. So part of that study again, we'll be evaluating throughout the course of the year, how are visitors reacting? Our volunteers so far are really excited about where we're going, staff are excited. So we want to see if that momentum continues throughout the year. So that's some of the study work that we will be doing. We kicked off 2025 with the launch of our very first annual report, which you all have as a resource now to look to. All of the work that will come in each of these quarterly updates to PDUAC will go right into that annual report for next year. So again, you'll have another resource up here, all of the items that were completed. So we talked about everything from our Warden's Economic Development Leadership Lunch-In to our tariff response strategy, which I'll talk about with the other report in just a moment. Our investment-ready due diligence projects, our data sharing program and the data hours that we're doing with all of your staff and the member municipalities to be able to really share good information, timely information and have conversations about how do we actually develop a narrative around that? We talked about sector scans in our Gather campaign. Our digital media shift where we are spending more time focusing on direct engagement from our department. We're moving social media to a supporting role instead of a primary role because things are changing very quickly in that landscape and the effectiveness is just not there. So instead of wasting our time where we know it's not going to make sense, we're trying to pivot in that landscape. We also talked about multiple events like our Cruisin' Connect event where we just had both Warden mattress hobs. And we also had Chris Peabody there as Deputy Warden from Bruce County welcomed every single person onto the boat that night. And we had almost 350 people trapped for three hours to network and get to know one another and really start to build those social circles in the region. The one thing that I do want to just spend a moment talking about is what's happening with the Business Enterprise Center. Things are really busy in the Business Enterprise Center. We've seen a 30% increase in consultations year over year with interest coming in and the demographic is shifting again. So we already in the first quarter had 176 inquiries, 63 moved on to one-on-one consultations, which resulted in 16 businesses started, 12 businesses sustained, nine businesses expanded and two businesses went through succession and were purchased just in the first three months of 2025. So things have been very busy. And the same with Sidnum Campus, we had 71 short-term rentals in the first three months. We're already achieving 30% of our revenue targets for this year and have hosted significant events. So things are going very well at Sidnum. Our regional marketing, we've also been busy right up onto billboards on the gardener because we know that that's a great spot to get captive attention when you're not moving anywhere. So we had our Gather Campaign billboard up there and Gray Roots will be there with dinosaurs in the next couple of weeks as well. And then a conversation, we started this year pulling Gray Roots updates into these PDUAC updates. So typically we would come here twice a year to talk to you specifically about Gray Roots, but we thought we're a full department, we should be going to PDUAC for those conversations and then coming here to talk to you about them. So just a real emphasis on our innovative practices work this year. Using that annual operating review to understand where we need to go, where things are changing so that we are being proactive instead of reactive, no different than what we're trying to do on the economic development and tourism side. And just a quick win that I want to highlight, last year through our master plan, we really prioritized programming. And we took, staff decided that we would take one summer student role and move it into an all-year, one-day-a-week role. Because it costs the same to have a full-time summer student as it does to have a 52-week, one-day-per-year student. And we introduced Craftastic Saturdays. And this was part of general admission, there's no additional charge to do that because we want to maintain accessibility for the community members who may not be able to access programming everywhere. That introduction of Craftastic Saturdays, by the end of March doubled our Saturday attendance. And the most, um, traffic coming through there is now young families. So we're hitting two of the targets that we're aiming for just with that introduction. So we know that it's working and we look forward to continuing that on. It was also a very busy year so far in programs, over 26 programs and 613 participants just in the first three months. We had three education programs with 111 students and some significant events that brought in over 615 attendees in the first three months when we were closed down quite a bit because of our snow. So that is an overview of the first report. And then the second one was around the key sector scan and tariffs. So last year we introduced the Sector Summit. And then we got rid of them this year. And we are introducing the Sector Scan. And the reason for that is that we are in a time, given all of the uncertainty plaguing our businesses right now, it was not the time to ask them to come to us, we wanted to go to them. So that's why we're doing the Sector Scan, we are going to their tables. And we started that in agriculture where KLENA is going to so far six different areas in agriculture to their tables to have conversations and to do this analysis and ask the same three questions across the board so that we can start to bring this information back. And that's what you'll find in this report. We're doing the same in manufacturing, we'll do the same in tourism so that we really understand where the opportunities are, where the challenges are. And we're not asking business to do anything outside of what they're already doing. They're already having these conversations, now we're gaining them and bringing them back. So a couple really interesting notes from happening in agriculture is that we're seeing significant expansion and diversification. The tariffs and market volatility are absolutely impacting manufacturing. Food sovereignty is becoming a bigger conversation. I know this is something that this table has talked about for quite a long time. But trying to understand how we can continue to support our local food production and agriculture so that we can feed our own is absolutely key. Operator resiliency challenges, it really is the perfect storm wearing down the mental health of our farmers. And we don't know typically until it's too late. So what other things besides Share the Road campaigns and Shed Talks are there to be able to support the farmers behind the business itself? And then challenges with the planning environment, with the significant shifts that we're seeing in climate change, it is really changing. What is possible to plant, when we need to be planting things? So understanding that in tourism, we're anticipating a lot of local tourism, domestic tourism, a lot of pride. But the one thing that we are also concerned about is a lack of spending in tourism. Because we are in an economic state right now where people are holding their dollars closer and that could have a significant impact. So we anticipate that your community events are going to be much more well-attended this year because again, that's creating better access to our communities. So you will see our summer students there. We just had a meeting right before council here, trying to understand what it is that they can do to come and support your community events and be there with information to talk about what are the other things you can do across the county. And then finally, on the manufacturing side of things, we have been monitoring this and watching this very significantly and working very closely with EMC. So you know Excellence in Manufacturing Consortium, it is the largest consortium for industry in Canada and it is based right here in Owen Sound. So they hosted their very first in-person event and they are working very hard on building a local supply chain database that goes right across Canada so that if you are looking to replace the part that may have been created in the United States, you are able to better find that part here in Canada. So that is work that we are working with them on and that they are leading. So things are going very well in this shift to go to the tables of the business and get the information we need. So this is something that we will continue to bring back to PDUAC and then back to council as well. And out of that conversation, it was actually Counselor Body who had brought forward the motion that Gray County would send correspondence to the Ministry of Tourism, Culture and Gaming and Ministry of Sport to respectfully request the reinstatement of Ontario Staycation Tax Credit and that that correspondence also be sent to our MPPs, Bruce Gray, Owen, Sound and Simcoe Gray. So after conversations with RTO 7, if council is to support this resolution, we will work a staff to put that letter together in consultation with RTO 7 and then get that to the appropriate parties. So that is the end of my update and I will turn it over to Director Taylor.
Great, thanks so much, Savannah. Good morning, Madam Warden, members of council and those that might be tuning in today. Keep in mind, I might have a biased opinion, but in my opinion, we had an enthralling presentation on the early results of the Growth Management Strategy by Liz Buckton. Just for those that might not have been able to attend, the county has hired Hempson Consulting to assist us with the Growth Management Strategy. And at this meeting, at the PDUAC meeting last week, we, we did have some early results and early thoughts that Liz shared that have been provided by Hempson based on what they've been through so far to date. Just as a bit of a refresher of the Growth Management Strategy, we'll look at both our housing and employment numbers for approximately the next 25 years. This study is triggered in part based on the fact that we do regular reviews of the Growth Management Strategy, the last one being in 2021. But it's also triggered based on the 2024 provincial planning statement changes, which now require us to more heavily consider the, the annual Ministry of Finance population projections in that regard. The ministry does, uh, project population. Uh, the ministry does uh uh project population, uh but they don't project um uh employment in that regard. And furthermore, the ministry projections give us the protection for the entire county, but is not break it down by each of our nine member municipalities in that regard. We have heard from others and through talking to Hempson that the Ministry of Finance projections are subject to change uh on an annual basis. And and certainly we've already seen some of those changes uh that that came out last year uh based on changes in federal immigration policy in that regard. Uh, one of the things that Liz uh cautioned us on through Hempson is is the need to think long-term as part of this process. Uh, so certainly a lot of the talk, as Savannah has noted at the meeting, was on the current economic climate, things like tariffs and 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 some of the the things that are happening globally and and with our neighbors to the south. Uh, but at the end of the day, this this will be a twenty-five, twenty-five-year forecast. So while there are certainly things that could be impacted in the short term, uh, we need to think beyond just the short term in that regard. One of the things that was uh presented in the presentation uh was with respect to the growth that we've achieved since the two thousand and twenty-one update to the growth management strategy. Uh, this was broken out by each of our nine member municipalities. Some are right on target. Uh, some are overachieving in 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 the growth category and and some are just slightly behind the the forecast growth targets in that regard. We have had an initial meeting with your municipal planning staff to talk about uh um the data needs for this study because the study is only as good as as the data we feed into it. And there'll certainly be lots more engagement with uh with municipal staff and and working with them to collect uh uh what you're seeing on the ground in that regard. In that uh regard, we're also working with other public bodies. We want to have detailed discussions with our school boards. We're also looking forward to uh what the future brings in terms of uh uh future school-aged children uh population in that regard. Uh, we look forward to continuing to collaborate with Jordan College and and understanding uh what they have on the horizon. Uh, and then this year we also want to uh dig heavily into uh into the healthcare sector, uh working with our local hospitals to understand also what they're seeing. Uh, simply put, if if uh this study is being funded by public dollars, uh why wouldn't we collaborate and and share with with all of those other public agencies? So hopefully we're not duplicating efforts in that regard. So this is still the very early stages. The hope is to have a a finalized growth management strategy for presentation uh back to council uh in the early fall of of two thousand and twenty-five. Uh, but there'll be lots more discussions to come and particularly at the municipal staff level. Uh, we'll thank your staff in advance for for all the uh friendly nudges they get from county staff asking for further information and further insights in that regard. So that's all I have for today, but certainly happy to uh take any questions alongside Director Myers if there are any questions here.
Okay, thank you. So I'll put it out to County Council uh Committee of the whole members. We'll start with councillor Greg.
Thank you. And through you, Warden, I just wondered if we could uh entertain a motion to split the vote as well. I'd like to speak to item three. I do have questions to that. Uh, but I think it'd be more uh appropriate uh with a motion to split uh the vote on the three items.
Okay, thank you. So your your request is to split off number three, but keep one and two uh together unless we hear differently from other members of. So, Madam Clerk, you've got that. Okay, so that's been noted. Um, may I ask for any other questions or comments for staff members? And we'll go to Deputy Warden Mill.
Thank you, Madam Warden, and thank you, Savannah, for that report, uh notwithstanding the the uncontrollable chaos from south of the border. Uh, we can only deal with the things that are in front of us, so um it's good to hear all of the collaboration that's going on with our local uh economic development. Uh, specifically to Director uh Taylor, Scott Taylor, I want to say Scott, but I got it. Director Taylor. Now the squirrel fell off the wheel. Um. Yeah, no. Oh, yeah, it was actually. Uh, it's it's uh, it was good to hear, is good to hear that this collaboration going on there as well with the local healthcare and education sectors. Are the ministries engaged in any of this? Because ultimately, it's the ministries that are going to fund and direct those funds to the various places of need. And as we've seen currently, it's not enough to just build houses for people. We need to build all the support structures that the community needs. And it's not just healthcare and and education. There's many others that go along, transportation, it goes on and on and on. So we can build our own little world and decide what we need here, but unless the ministry is is supportive and aware, then we're going nowhere. So I I I presume that they're involved with all this or they're kept apprised of it at the very least. So I I'm just wondering if if Scott could comment on uh some of that, please.
Director Taylor?
Yeah, through you, Madam Warden. Uh, thank you for your your question and comments, councillor Mill. At this stage, we haven't engaged provincial ministry staff. It's certainly something we could reach out to in that regard. Um, typically what's happened with these growth strategies in the past is is the county works collaboratively with with local partners, including our municipalities uh to generate the numbers. And then what ultimately comes from that is is the need for a future amendment to the the county official plan. Uh, in that case, depending on the scale of the amendment, the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing is either circulated or in some cases, if it's a a five- or ten-year review or a new official plan, they're the approval body for that. Um, but your point is well taken with respect to those those provincial um services that are that are funded by the province and and regulated by the province and including healthcare and education in that regard. Um, so maybe staff could take that back, have a bit of a think on this in terms of A, how we engage local partners and and B, maybe how we uh look to see that that information is is shared back with with ministry staff. So um, we'll we'll think further on that and and certainly report back to council uh when we have further updates if if that's appropriate.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other? We'll go to councillor McQueen.
Thank you, Madam Warden, and thanks for the presentation. Just going back to the part about our growth study to you, Scott, with regards to uh dialogue with the uh school board. Um, I think it's so important that they are uh engaged because as as you all know, when we went through the situation with the Markdill School, their numbers were wrong. And you look at that school, since that school was proposed, it had to be expanded twice. You know, I look at the Meford School, it's expanding and portables and you know, so it's so important that they're engaged and I look at some of those projections because you know, I know not every kid maybe likes portables. Maybe they do. They get a chance to go outside. But I mean, it's staying uh staying ahead of that somewhat and it's so important. And I, you know, as councillor Millan said as well, it's it's important to all the other agencies that, you know, follow along that as well. But just from the experience from the school board part, it's so important that they're and I know, Randy, you presented to them. I don't know if they still do that annual engagement, but um anyway, it was that was just an example where numbers weren't right and we had to prove that they were they weren't right and we had to prove that it was that things were changing. So I don't know if there's any other comment to that, but I think it's important that we continue to be on that game. Thank you.
Uh, through you, Warden, and thank you for that that comment and question. And yes, we we do uh, we are invited to to their community um planning and and uh engagement process on an annual basis. Um, we had the opportunity to present uh some recent statistics uh from Gray County's side uh on this. And we noted uh at that time that we are uh working on this this project. They at that meeting also presented some updated data and projections that they uh have been working on as well um with with one of their consultants. So we want to look for the opportunity to have have their consultants and and at our uh consultants and the projects to uh to to sit down and look at uh how we can align some of the data and projections that are that are being looked at so so that we can uh when it comes to uh schools and and supporting the schools uh for for our growth, we can make sure we're aligned as possible. So um, we've reached out since then to to note that uh uh we would like to the opportunity to work together and to engage with them on that. So we will continue to work with them and 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 see those opportunities for sure.
Okay, um, and certainly from oh, is there a follow-up?
Yeah, just a follow-up and I and thank you for that, Madam Warden, to to the CEO. And it's so important that it gets pushed up to the ministry. Uh, obviously in Southgate where we had the announcement last May about the schools and stuff like that. It's just so important because uh both with the uh Markdill School, we had to make different delegations to the Ministry of Education, say, look, it's there's, you know, the numbers are increasing and and fortunately they were amenable to expanding that uh and they and they are building facilities that can be expanded further to that degree. But anyway, just as long as it gets pushed up to. Thank you.
Thank you. And I know that um coming from that sector, that the the concept and the philosophy of portables used to be that it allowed for agility and and smart business sense to support the education in the the segments where they needed to go. So when one population was downsizing, they could then move those classrooms to provide for students in another area. But it does seem in this this day and age, that's just never happening now. It's just going up and up in everybody's backyard. So um, it's excellent that you're continuing that uh C E O shirts are to make sure that we're contributing, but the message has been heard that it needs to communicate all the way up to the ministry as well. Um, to the province. Okay, thank you. Are there further? We'll go to uh councillor Kentner.
Thank you. And through you, uh, Madam uh Warden. Um, I think we all recognize that the forecasting has been uh low, uh dramatically low, I think. And and we're we're hiring the people who gave us those low uh numbers. And what I want to say is that uh uh we suffer uh in Gray County uh as having been branded as a slow-growth area. And I think we're all recognizing that things are changing. They're changing rapidly. How, when are we going to get some new figures and how do we get that? Because uh, we we really need to rebrand ourselves as an area that is growing and and how and why we're growing. So I I'm just hopeful that we're going to get some numbers and how we get those because uh everybody and especially Owen Sound knows their their population sign never changed for twenty years. And it suffered as a result, but look what's happening in Owen Sound today. So, thank you.
Thank you. And we'll go to Director Taylor for a comment.
Yes, uh, through you, Madam Warden. Thank you for your your comments and question, councillor Kentner. Um, so so simply put, we we should be getting uh new numbers uh later this summer or early fall in that regard. Uh, the one thing I will I will note there is is that when we did this study, uh, we started it in in two thousand and twenty and and uh and it was wrapped up in two thousand and twenty-one. There was a lot of uncertainty at that time because we were sort of in the throes of a a global pandemic and everything else and and people weren't sure um what the what the growth outlook was going to be. Uh, but the one thing the consultant told us at that time uh was since about two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen, we had been uh growing at an almost unprecedented rate. Uh, and I think what we've seen at at the local level in in most of our municipalities is is that has just continued. And while we did have a global pandemic, uh, we saw increased interest in in all of our Gray County communities and and certainly encourage uh councillors uh that weren't able to attend P D A C to have a look at the slideshow that's that's on our county website associated with that agenda. Um, because it does get the growth numbers and and really reinforces um that all of our our communities are growing in that regard. And and so certainly we might not be growing at 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 the rapid rate that some of our our neighbors to the south are. Um, but I would say at least in 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 my twenty years in grow in in Gray, uh, we're growing at at a clip that that certainly we didn't see ten or fifteen years ago. And and this is true of of many of those communities within a few hours of the G T A. So we're certainly interested to uh to study this further and and to try to understand how this is going to impact us. Um, certainly when we think about the the work that Emery's team does or the work that Savannah's team does in that regard, uh, it in fact, it affects so many of our county functions. So we really want to work collaboratively with municipalities, uh provincial ministries, as we've heard, as we've heard here today and local partners to to get this right in that regard.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All right. So councillor Greg has moved a motion to split item number three to separate it from item number one and two. And I'll just look to see. Okay, so the recommended motion from councillor Greg that will need a second or four is that the above-noted motion be divided into two motions by dividing out out the first, second, and third clauses from a fourth clause. Okay, so it's the fourth clause that you had asked to to parse out. May I ask for a second or? Seconded by councillor McKay. Uh, any discussion on splitting the motion, just splitting the motion? Okay, see no hands up. All those in favor? Okay, Madam Clerk, that is carried. So, Madam Clerk, if you could then walk us through what you'd like us to entertain next then?
So the first motion is um, we've divided the, as the Warden stated, into two separate motions. So the first one is that the um planning and economic development advisory committee meeting minutes be endorsed and the resolutions um that report E D T C P D A C O three twenty-five regarding the E D T C Strategic Progress Report to be received for information and that the report E D T C P D A C O four twenty-five regarding key sector scan and tariffs be received for information. That's the first motion to be considered.
Okay, so that would be the majority minus what we see listed, what was section three is now become uh the fourth, the reference to the fourth motion. So this is on the remainder of it, and it has been moved and seconded already. And I didn't see any further hands for any further discussion on this motion. So I'll ask all those in favor. And that motion is carried. Okay. Uh, so now, uh, Madam Clerk, you're going to need a mover and seconder for this as well because councillor Greg had only moved to s- to split it. So we'll know. Or or do you continue to use the same mover and seconder? Okay, it's the same mover mover and seconder that got this onto the floor for discussion. So it is on the floor for discussion and we are now at the the one that is with regards to the Ontario staycation credit. So with that discussion, councillor Greg.
Thank you for the opportunity. And just a question, probably to the committee chair or the motion mover. Uh, in the package, it it really was unclear what um dialogue or conversation might have occurred that motivated such a motion. Uh, so I just wondered, um, I'd like to hear more perhaps uh what the motivations for the for the motion, the request is. Um, because essentially, uh, what I'm most familiar with right now is people are not traveling south of the border. It's not that there's less of a uh 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 that's been demonstrated yet that there's less demand for travel. It's where they are traveling to. Uh, and they are, and as Canadians, the preference right now is not to go south. Uh, so I'm just wondering uh what necessitates um this request? You know, I'm not pretending to be at the provincial level, but um we have a lot of needs. Um, as a society, we just heard of of school expansion as being one of them. Um, so if if you look to ask for a reduction in revenues, um, then essentially you have to have a subsequent or an offsetting uh reduction in the expenses of operating government. And this is we're requesting um, you know, a tax credit. Uh, so I'm just wondering uh what motivated such a request uh and why council should further consider it.
Okay, so I'll look to director Myers to um provide further background on the discussion that was had.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Warden. Um, the discussion really came around the domestic tourism uh consideration that we think people are going to be staying here and traveling within Canada. But Canada is very expensive to travel in. So given where we are economically, the thought is that people will be doing all the free things instead of staying over or spending their dollars. So if this was a way that could support some spending of dollars in the economy, but within Canada, within Gray, Bruce, Simcoe area that we could try and retain some of that. Um, that's how it started and uh councillor Body was really good to say that we should be talking to R T O seven as well to determine, you know, what what does this letter look like or is there anything else that we should be considering? But this was one um I guess tool that was identified um by the province previously through the pandemic. Specifically, the environment that we're experiencing today is very similar to the pandemic. So it was thought that that could be part of the benefit to help offset the larger expense of traveling within Canada when people may not spend their money at all.
Okay, thank you. And we're going to go to councillor Body next.
Uh, thank you very much, uh, Warden. Um, the province has been talking through the tariff things about spending money and um keeping the economy going as uh we have certain things that drop off. It was in discussions with a manager of a hotel within Owen Sound uh and city staff that he could uh point to specific um um months that they had really good traffic in Owen Sound as a result of the uh the last time that the province ran this uh program during COVID uh and getting people out and around. Same thing was going on then. People weren't crossing the borders and couldn't cross the borders because of COVID. So as we're looking at, you know, economic impact of uh tariffs and things and people not going elsewhere, it'd be nice to keep them in Ontario, not going to Quebec maybe or uh or or heading west or different places. So the idea is uh knowing that we're we're probably going to take a So the idea is knowing that we're we're probably going to take a whack in the province as a result of of tariffs, to do this, to try and support hotels, support the industry and certainly up here with all the restaurants, hotels and tourism locations or or places to come and look, Tom Thompson, Eric Howard, et cetera. It just makes sense that that we ask the province to reinsert that or consider that as they're looking at how they're going to spend their their money supporting the economy with regard to the impact of tariffs.
Okay, thank you. So is there any further discussion? All right, I'm not seeing any hands go up. In that case, then I'll call the vote, all those in favor. And that motion is carried. Okay, thank you very much. So that allows us to move on to item seven B. And the recommendation is that staff report C S R C W zero eight twenty five regarding the acquisition of land for redevelopment of the early on in Hanover be received. And that staff be directed to enter into an agreement of purchase and sale in the amount of 225,000 conditional on council's approval for the property located at lot twenty two, plan eight four six, known as Seventeenth Street Crescent in Hanover. And that by and that a bylaw be prepared for council's consideration. And that the purchase of the property be funded from the early on capital reserve fund. And that staff be directed to initiate the R F P process to secure the services of an architect to complete site plan and building drawings and bring the R F P results to council for consideration. So with that, I'll look for a mover and a seconder, moved by Deputy Warden Milne. And a seconder, seconded by Counselor Eccles. It's now on the floor for discussion, so we'll look to Director Shaw to introduce this. Thank you. Oh, sorry. Sorry, you're not seconding? Oh, okay, yeah, sorry. Sorry, I've been. Okay, so if if, okay, so it's on the floor for discussion. And you're requesting a break before Director Shaw speaks. Okay, so let's do a five minute break. We do have a time that we have to be, we do have a visitor coming in for closed session. So we will need to be concise in terms of our break timing this morning. So if we can be back in five minutes, Director Shaw, if you want to take a moment and then come back to the lectern directly after. Okay, if I could please encourage everyone to take your seats and we will carry on with agenda item seven B. It has been moved and seconded for a recommendation that has been contained in the report. So at this point in time, we have Director Shaw to introduce the report. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Warden, and good morning, everyone. This report pertains to the redevelopment of the early on family and our Child and Family Center in Hanover. The Child and Family Center offers free, high quality programs for family and children from birth to six years of age. Parents and caregivers can learn and play with their children, meet other parents and get advice from early childhood professionals. Back in August of 2024, I approached council about working with the the Bruce Gray Catholic District School Board to purchase a lot in Hanover for this redevelopment. The school board had to go through their own internal process to ensure that there were, or determine that there were no internal buyers and that the land could be sold outside of the school system. After completing this process, we, they are willing to enter into an agreement of purchase and sale with Gray County for 225,000 dollars for the lot. The lot is currently zoned as an R one in consultation with the town of Hanover staff. The use for the building would fall into the existing zoning. An environmental assessment has been completed by G E I consultants showing no concerns on the site. A historical review of the site was complete with no findings and a title search revealed no significant findings. So as next steps, staff would like to move forward with the purchase of this parcel of land and initiate the process for a request for proposal for architectural services. We are proposing a 350, or sorry, a 3,500 to 4,000 square foot slab on grade building with an outdoor play area and parking. We have a rough, very rough estimate of construction at around 350 to 375 per square foot plus soft cost playground and contingency for a total of about 1.95 million dollars. We're proposing to fund the acquisition of the land from our early on capital reserve. And we have three sources of funding for the build, which include our early on capital reserve, the accessibility reserve and our our sale of the existing building. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you very much, Director Shaw. So any questions from committee, the whole members? Deputy Warden Milne.
Thank you, Madam Warden, and just one question, how soon can we get it built?
Well, we can, well, we're really hoping for the end of next year, end of 2026. If we can get out and get our architectural person hired, get the drawings going, get them approved by council, and then hopefully start building in the spring, that would be our our timing.
Okay, any other questions? All right, then, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor? And that motion is carried. Excellent use. Thank you, Director Shaw. Next, we have item seven C. It's recommended that report P D R C W twenty six twenty five be received and that all written and oral submissions on official plan amendment number twenty four were considered and helped to make an informed recommendation and decision. And that proposed county official plan amendment number twenty four to permit the redesignation of rural lands to rural with exceptions designation lands legally described as part of lot twenty nine concession one division one, part of lot twenty eight concession one division one two three, being part two and five reference plan sixteen R one zero six nine five in the geographic township of Norman B and in the municipality of West Gray be approved. And a bylaw to adopt the county official plan amendment be prepared for consideration by county council. May I ask for a mover and a seconder? Moved by Counselor Dickert, seconded by Counselor Hutchinson. And it is now on the floor for discussion, so I will welcome Mr. McMurty to come up and introduce it along. Oh, well, actually, Director Taylor, you might like to do an introduction first.
Thank you, Madam Warden. I I just wanted to take this time to introduce Derek McMurty to council. Derek has been with us since 2022, but I don't believe he's made a presentation before this council before. He's been sort of the secret weapon of the planning department because he's been working behind the scenes. You've probably seen his name on on a lot of the comments on municipal applications, and he's worked on various different projects. But thrilled to have Derek here presenting in in front of council for the first time. So with that, Madam Warden, I'll turn it over to Derek.
Good morning, everyone. As Scott said, my name's Derek McMurty. I'm the county planner assigned to file this file official plan amendment number twenty four. So the proposed county official plan amendment is to redesignate a portion of the subject lands from rural and hazard lands to rural with exceptions and hazard lands. And this exception will permit the creation of one new rural lot beyond the county's lot density policies. Pre-submission consultation between the consultant, the municipality, and the county identified the submission requirements. The required reports were submitted in support of the applications. A zoning bylaw amendment and a consent application are also required by the municipality of West Gray. The zoning bylaw has since been approved by West Gray, subject to O P twenty four being approved. A joint public meeting discussed both applications held on February 18, 2025. So this is the location of the subject lands. The subject lands are bordered by Gray Road six to the west and north and McFarlane Drive to the east. McFarlane Drive also forms the border boundary between the municipality of West Gray and the township of Southgate. The property is located approximately two kilometers north of Mount Forest and no new accesses are proposed off of Gray Road six. The subject property is located within a rural development locally known as Plumeville and which predates the county's current official plan policies. The subject property is approximately 27 hectares in size and contains a single residential dwelling. And the property is primarily used for farming purposes. The subject property is surrounded by low density rural residential lands, forested lands, and active farmland to the south and west, active farmland and forest lands, or sorry, south and east, active farmland and forest lands to the west and low density rural residential lands to the north. O P twenty four will amend section four point or five point four point three of the county official plan, the county's lot density policies, with a site specific amendment and redesignate a portion of the lands from rural and hazard lands to rural with exceptions and hazard lands. As stated previously, this would permit a new lot that would otherwise exceed the county's official plan lot density policies. Currently, the original township lot that would contain the proposed lot has 14 lots, while the county O P would only commit a total of five lots. The proposed lot will have an area of 0.24 hectares and will be serviced by a private well and septic system. The retained lot would have an area of 26.76 hectares and would continue to be used for agricultural uses, including the existing single residential dwelling. But here is a map of the severed lot boundaries. So comments were received from the municipality of West Gray, the township of Southgate, and the historic Sonning Maitin, who all write comments indicating no concerns. The Ministry of Transportation also had no concerns with the application. However, their comments also provide the requirements that must be completed before a permit can be issued for the future residents on a severed lot. A member of the public submitted comments verbally to indicate their support for the proposal, and no comments were received during the public meeting. The 2024 P P S provides direction on land uses and economic growth within rural areas and rural land within municipalities. The P P S generally directs growth towards settlement areas. To confirm, Plumeville is not a settlement area. However, the P P S supports limited residential lot creation on rural lands provided that the lot can be serviced adequately by private onsite servicing. A hydro geological study was submitted and determined that the lot can be adequately serviced by onsite private servicing. As for the county official plan, the lands are currently designated as rural and hazard lands on schedule A. Schedule B indicates that the subject lands contain aggregate resource area. The proposed lot would not impact aggregate resource area, the aggregate resource extraction due to the lot being located within an existing residential cluster and the radius of the impact on future aggregate operations would not be expanded. From an ecological perspective, the property contains or is adjacent to a stream, other wetlands, significant woodlands, significant wildlife habitat, potential habitat that threaten in space or species, and a fish habitat. County planning ecology staff determined that the potential impact of the natural heritage features would be negligible and an environmental impact study would not be required. As a proposed new lot will be located adjacent to the features with sufficient developable area outside of the natural heritage features. Lastly, the subject lands are not covered by the West Gray official plan, which only covers during a new step. Based on all this, the proposed development is generally consistent with the P P S and generally conforms to the goals and objectives of the county official plan. So as previously mentioned, the proposed lot will greatly exceed the minimum lot density. It is important to note that county staff remain generally hesitant to recommend approval for residential development that proposes to create new lots in the rural designation beyond what is currently granted in the county official plan. However, as with any planning act application. However, as with any planning act application, it is important to consider the site specific context and situation. In this case, county planning staff suggests that the proposed lot may still meet the general intent of the county official plan within the rural designation for a variety of reasons. To start, the proposed lot is small and located directly between two existing uses and would have no additional impacts on agricultural operations or aggregate resources. Further, the proposed lot is located on existing fifty kilometer per hour residential street with services such as waste pickup and snow clearing. It is also in close proximity to the settlement area of Mount Forest where residents would be able to meet their day to day needs. In addition, the proposed severance would not increase the boundaries of the existing residential cluster. As said previously, the lot can also be serviced by onsite servicing without impacting surrounding properties as per the service report submitted with the application. Lastly, the existing dwelling is to remain on the retained lot and no new sensitive receptor is likely to be constructed on that retained lot. So it is important to note that O P twenty three does not apply to this development as O P twenty four predates the passing of O P twenty three. It's also important to note that at the time of writing the report for O P twenty three, O P, oh, sorry, O P twenty four, O P twenty three was in the appeal period and O P twenty three is now in force in effect. O P twenty three does not alter the real lot density policies. However, it does reinforce the county's policy directive to steer most new development to settlement areas. With that said, and with any planning act application, there are no, there are site specific considerations where exceptions to this directive may be appropriate. Staff believe that O P twenty four is an example of where the consideration of this exception may be warranted. Staff will continue to maintain the real lot density policies as they have preserved rural lands for farming and resource uses. However, having the ability to consider sites and context specific exceptions provides some feed flexibility for new residential opportunities without opening the door to widespread rural residential development. So staff are recommending that the report P D R C W two six two five be received, that all written and oral submissions on official plan number twenty four were considered and helped to make an informed recommendation and decision. And that proposed county official plan amendment number twenty four to permit the redesignation of rural lands to the rural with exceptions designation on lands legally described as being part of lot twenty nine concession one division one, part of lot twenty eight concession one division one to three, being part two and five reference plan sixteen R one zero six nine five in the geographic township of Norman B, now in the municipality of West Gray be approved. And a bylaw to adopt the county official plan amendment be prepared for consideration by county council. That concludes my presentation. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any question.
Thank you, Mr. McMurty, and thank you for those additional details. So I will then put it out to county council members and if we could just return that screen so I can keep an eye on virtual. But we'll go to councillor Mackey.
Thank you, Warden. Good job, Derek, on your first presentation. It's quarter to twelve, one of the quickest planning reports we've had prior to lunchtime, so congratulations. This makes complete sense, even though it doesn't meet all the criteria. You know, when I read through this file, it just made complete sense. So I'm glad that we're willing to take a look at things that maybe don't fit right in the box. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Not seen any here in the chamber and I don't see any virtual hands up online. All right then, so in that case, then I'll ask, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor. And that motion is carried. So thank you very much, Mr. McMurty. A successful first presentation. Excellent. So that allows, we didn't have any other items that had been pulled from the consent agenda. So that allows us to move into the closed session portion of our meeting today. We do have a number of items, four different items. It is recommended that the committee, the whole, does now go into closed section pursuant to section two thirty nine, two of the municipal act two thousand and one as amended to discuss. Number one, litigation or potential litigation, including matters before administrative tribunals affecting the municipality or local board with regards to Thornbury Acres. And number two, advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose, again, for Thornbury Acres. And number three, labor relations or employee negotiations with regards to uniform and a staffing update. And number four, a proposed or pending acquisition of or disposition of land by the municipality or local board. And that will be for discussion as well. So may I ask for a mover and a seconder? Moved by councillor McQueen, seconded by councillor Mackey. Any discussion on going into closed? All those in favor? And that motion is carried. So we will take a moment to shift into closed. Okay, thank you very much. So we've now come out a closed session and I can report that we discussed only the matters that were that that we had identified we were going to discuss as we went into closed session. With that, I will then move to a motion to adjourn. I'll ask for a mover and a seconder. Thank you. So it's moved by councillor Pringle and seconded by councillor Mackey that we adjourn at one forty eight P M. All those, all those in favor? And that motion is carried. Thank you very much, everyone.
Have a fantastic rest of your birthday, Warden.
Thank you.
Happy birthday. Go Oilers.